All the meetings back to order. Already done the roll call. I guess we could note to the record that all five city councilors are present. Did we hold public comment on the closed session?
There was no public, so we just went through that.
Okay, all right, cool. And then you guys.
I'll report back from the closed session. We gave staff direction and we'll be holding another special meeting to be determined, closed session meeting to discuss this as a council in the future.
We can rise for the mic, sir.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Tonight, we're happy to welcome Tom Hesaldans here to give us a presentation on the status of the Mossbury Trail Project. If you want to come up to either that podium or you could, if you'd rather go next to the sheriff and sit down there next to Blake, unless you want to go here.
You push me down the chair so we can see you.
Yeah, so you can push these guys to your desk.
Yeah.
And then I may actually start video. Are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Before you begin, could you at least introduce yourself, how you've been involved with the project for many years, so the public can understand?
I'm Tom Hesaldans. I actually worked on the world in 1978 when Ted Fay was here and he had worked on the first Hedge Creek Falls Trail and been in and out of that project for many years. And then after the spill, I had money from Southern Pacific to move along. And it didn't happen for many years after that because we didn't get permission from across Saint Germain. And then recently it rekindled itself because interestingly, one of the Saint Germain members wanted to restart it. That was Mac Hanson, who has now passed away. But he really got it going about eight years ago. So here we are. And that's the update I'll give you is just exactly where we are.
Okay.
I want to see, you know, let me just try speaking to that. Where should I stand?
You can have the podium seat, Blake. Yeah.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
But the main thing is if you just, you need to be near one of the microphones of the Zoom members.
Yeah, is that, okay. So basically, eight years ago, Mac Hanson came to the Trail Association and said, let's get this going again. And we gave it a good effort to try to convince Saint Germain Foundation. And the whole reason for going on that side of the river was that I wanted to stay out of the floodplain. So we had a route figured out where you use the Hedge Creek Falls Trailhead. After you go under the falls, you start traversing out to the top of that big rock outcrop rather than to where the overlook is. And then the river with a bridge just before Mossbury Falls. We did a flagged route, had it surveyed, prepared a proposal to Saint Germain, had it appraised. They didn't like the appraisal. We ended up offering three times the appraised amount. Still didn't work. So then we started talking to Union Pacific about the other side of the river, knowing that the only route that would work for them would be as far away from the tracks as possible, which means being close to the water. So I scouted a route through there that will work most of the time, except for really high flows. But normal spring runoff, it would still be a little bit above that. And it's beautiful down there. There's no argument. One of the other goals that we had was to make it ADA compliant, the whole thing. And that will be more difficult down there by the water. And for the first go, we're talking about using crushed rocks similar to the ballast that the railroad has up on the tracks. The public's very used to walking on that material, and it would be more resilient to high flows. So that's what we're looking at for now, which is not ADA compliant, but at least it's the start, with the main objective to get people off the tracks for safety reasons. But it will also be a much more beautiful route to get there, and far shorter than the current situation of going down Scarlet Way and walking all the way up from there on the tracks. It would only be 1,800 feet from where, we would put a bridge at the mouth of Hedge Creek over to the other side of the river, and from there, 1,800 feet up to Mossbury Falls from that point. So since the process was taking so long, we used some of the money that had been donated by a major donor. With his permission, we used some of that money to start the upgrades on the Hedge Creek Trail because that's all on city property. And we took steepness out of two really steep areas. We widened the trail and we extended it down to the river. And we suspected that people would key into what opportunity that opened. And sure enough, people realized you can wade across knee deep at the tail of that big pool and get over to the tracks and greatly shorten the amount of time on the tracks. So there was already a safety benefit in doing that. But that only works during the summer, you know, on hot days and people who are willing to cross. So we really want to keep going here and get a bridge at that location and then a constructed trail below the tracks. Union Pacific has been receptive, but slow. They continue to be not only receptive, but on their end, it is moving. They are, I think it's safe to say, conceptually supportive of doing this. Their procedure now is that they delegated to a third-party civil engineering firm that they retain for a variety of projects involving the railroad right-of-way. They came up with a cost estimate, I think it was around $22,000 that the Trail Association fronted, I think it may have even gone through the city, to pay for the engineering services provided by that company. So we've been working with that company as a go-between to the railroad. We had a Zoom meeting last October, went through a whole bunch of details. We have drawings done that are close to being construction-ready drawings. It would involve a suspension bridge over the river and an approach catwalk leading up to that, and then the trail itself. One of the big sticking points has been a fence. And the railroad has a standard type of fence that they like to use to keep people off of tracks. It's eight feet high, expanded steel, really beefy, blocks wildlife, blocks people, fairly vandal-proof. And originally, they wanted it the whole length, the 1,800 feet. And we said, well, that's going to be a problem with blocking wildlife. This relates to another issue, which is we need a lead agency on the permits and on SEQA, and the city's ownership only goes partway up. So California Department of Fish and Wildlife had said they would be the lead agency, but they wanted to do a categorical exemption and other than something more involved like an initial study or an EIR. So we have N-Plan on board who concluded that if that fence is broken in the middle, they felt comfortable moving ahead with a Cat X. And the point we were making to the railroad is you really don't want the fence in the middle where the tracks are right on that steep edge where it drops off. First of all, they have a policy of not wanting anything within 15 feet of the tracks. Well, that ledge that people walk along on the skinny portion is maybe eight feet wide, six to eight feet wide, and then it drops really steeply to the river. So we would have to put the fence partway down the hill, which would create a trash rack. Everything that rabbled off the slope would pile up on the fence. When we used to have snow, and hopefully will again, and they plow that off, that's going to go down and it knock over the fence. It'd just be a nightmare. So they are tentatively in agreement that we'll just fence the wide area across from Hedge Creek where the bridge would come across, and then the wide area up at Mossbury, right before the railroad bridge that goes over the river, and not have a fence in between. And more recently, I pointed out, well, you've got little retaining walls all the way along there, plus a steep sideslope, plus the fact that you build a trail for people, nobody's going to want to walk the tracks anymore. So we're not anticipating a trespass problem. And the retaining walls kind of add to that whole thing. And they shouldn't have anything higher than flush grade up by the tracks, so they'd be able to push stuff off the edge. So there was a problem area down by the flat across from Hedge Creek Falls where the, there's a user trail that cuts down to a low floodplain through there before you get to where the river's right up against the steep bank. And the solution that I came up with is to actually have the fence follow, not too close to the trail, but down to that floodplain flat at the toe of the slope as the trail goes up the floodplain with maybe an eight-foot offset from the trail. I don't want people to feel squeezed up against a fence. But by keeping the fence at the toe of the slope, whatever rabbles off from above isn't going to pile up on the fence. And then when you get down to where the floodplain peters out and the trail starts going right at the toe where the steep slope goes into the river, that the fence would just cut up and coincidentally, there's a retaining wall up there, maybe a three-foot, five-foot, but it would tie into that. And they like that idea. So I'm really hoping, they're running it up the flagpole now back in Omaha. Once they get the fence issue resolved, then N-Plan has said they can move ahead with SEQA and the regulatory permits. And we'll need three of them here because we're down below the ordinary high watermark with the trail. So we need Army Corps and water quality, as well as state fish and wildlife. So N-Plan will take care of all the permits. The process with the railroad from this point forward will be to submit the final, final construction drawings and specifications. They already have me preparing an operations and maintenance plan, which I've submitted. That's part of the package. And then they will take everything and prepare what they call a construction and maintenance plan, a CNM plan, which will include, from their perspective, what kind of tenure do they want to provide the city of Dunsmere for this trail? Will it be a lease? We'd asked them in the past about an easement. They're not really warm on the idea of an easement. Probably will be a lease, but they want to know the minimum area that would be involved where we don't affect railroad operations at all, they don't affect the trail, we don't ask for any more of a lease area than what's needed to maintain a trail. So basically, we have the bridge over the river, and then from then on, we're down along the river. And then at Mossbury, you get back up a little bit and tie into the historic trail that's there. You know, the history here is so interesting because the railroad provided the first public access to the falls. And there was a trail there. There was the motel and the water fountain up there at Shasta Springs, and people would walk back along the tracks to get to Mossbury. Then a private party built the bridge, then Prospect Avenue over the river, 1946, I think, somewhere in the 40s, washed out in 86. State bought a piece of property at the end of Prospect Avenue for parking to get to Mossbury Falls. So there's this long, long history of public access. The ownership is interesting because the railroad has a 200-foot right-of-way, 100 feet on either side of the tracks. And when you cut the corner up at Mossbury, it cuts off the gravel bar that everybody stands on and a little bit of the forest. So that's on Saint Germain property. But there's a well-established prescriptive easement there from all of this public use. Nonetheless, a few individuals at Saint Germain have threatened to sue. We don't know where that's going to go. Mac Hanson, from day one, was taking the perspective of what you would ordinarily expect. For example, for the St. Barnabas Church in Mount Shasta, I got two grants. I fixed their lower parking lot. We restored a six-acre meadow. We put a half-mile trail around it. It's all open to the public. You know, most religious organizations are wanting to do something for the greater good. I'm still hoping Saint Germain will come around. I don't know. But I sure hope they don't try to find some way to slow this thing down because there is this huge public safety issue, and it's a tremendous resource that the general public deserves to see. One thing that Saint Germain did try recently is they tried to get the Indian tribes to oppose it. They managed to get the Shasta tribe, which is not federally recognized, to send a letter saying that they opposed it, but they don't even understand it. And interestingly, there's three territories that overlap in this vicinity, the Shasta tribe, the Winemum-Winntu, and then the Pitt River tribe. So I got ahold of the Winntu folks who really helped with Towne Dolly Park. The name Towne Dolly is a Winntu name for Grant Towne Dolly. And they were totally supportive of the park. And they said, yeah, this is ridiculous. Of course, the public should be able to go to Mossbury, including Native Americans, because it's been sacred to them for thousands of years. So, you know, that's kind of what we're up against. But that, I'm just hoping that doesn't turn into anything. We've been trying to do everything possible to do what's best for the public good and not impact Saint Germain. It will actually take pressure off of Saint Germain because right now, people had cut through their chain-linked fence in order to go up through their property and drop down to get to Mossbury Falls. Having this trail will completely eliminate that.
Two things. When we started with Mac Hanson, when we started making a lot of noise, 2000, actually, it was January 22, 2013, was my birthday. The, we had dinner. Brenda Baines was the city manager, I was the mayor, and Brian Wilson was the fishing guide for the railroad executives. At the end of the day, they tried to tip Brian Wilson. Brian Wilson refused to tip. He said, whatever you can do for me, do for my city. Reason why I say this is a man named Dave Widdershaw. He was like, God, the CEO of the railroad, he was the dude. He was Buck Rochell's boss. And he's the one that told us about this story, about Brian Wilson being such a great guy, such a great guy, had a great time, and the fact that he was going to do for the city. He said, when the time comes, I will build that bridge and bring it up. Have you been in talk with him? Is he still around? Is that, I'm just reiterating, they've offered to build it and bring it.
I have not heard his name mentioned in recent years. One of the reasons the project went slowly was because Union Pacific did a major reorganization. Buck Rochell retired about that time. His replacement didn't have near the authority that Buck had in the past. There was more local control in the past. Now it's been more centralized. So that slowed down the project. And at this stage of the game, I don't know if he's involved.
I'm going to find out. I want to thank you for your dedication and your time and all your efforts in this, and I so look forward to it coming into fruition.
Well, we talked about a timetable with Ellis Mays, who's the civil engineer working for the railroad. And he's, you know, it's, there's a chance it could be built next year. I think that's a reasonable target to aim for. Getting the lease agreement worked out is, I think, going to be the next big challenge. And they did at one point, actually, two different occasions, they made some comment about money. At Towne Dolly Park, the city rents, leases some railroad land that's a leftover from when the big landslide came off of Bradley Ridge and covered the tracks and filled the river. So they actually moved the river. And so it's not part of the right-of-way, but that's leased to the city for a dollar a year. So we threw that one out, said, well, how about a dollar a year for the trail to Mossbury? And they were wanting something substantially more. But they have a lot of people that use their right-of-way that they make money off of, for example, fiber optics. So part of the challenge is for us to, is to say, you know, this is a public interest project. It's helping you get people off the tracks, reduce your liability, improve public safety. We really want something reasonable. And the other thing that relates to this is the city's role that the city needs to think about is, in this operations and maintenance plan, the Trail Association will be there as backup, but it's basically the city's project. And the city needs to make sure that it can do what would be necessary to maintain the trail, deal with safety issues. A lot of that discussion went on, by the way. So we're having special signage about high flow since part of the trail is going to be in the floodplain. Same thing applies to Hedge Creek Falls. You know, you don't want people going behind the falls when you have a raging torrent. So we'll have a sign there. There'll be a sign on the other side of the river. They, recently, we came up with the idea of putting a locking gate on the bridge over the river. So if there's a train derailment, or there's maintenance that they're doing where there's a risk to the public, or if there's exceptionally high river flows, that gate can be closed. We, the recent vandalism at Hedge Creek at the overlook brought up the need for some sort of a surveillance camera. These sorts of things need to be put in place so that the city can do what needs to be done to manage that project well, keep the railroad happy, with the back of the Trail Association. And I would imagine other people want to help. But just to be aware that that's coming.
Okay.
Yeah.
What planned, like, facilities would be at either the, in location for Mossbury or at Hedge Creek?
We've been looking at this in phases because the overarching goal has been to get people off the tracks. And we've received 320,000 or 340,000 in donations, but we're going to need quite a bit more. So we wanted to keep the total as manageable as possible. We didn't add other things to it for phase one. But I did draw up a design for much more parking up at the Hedge Creek Trailhead. I think that would be very good to do, to improve the trailhead.
Yes, certainly.
Yeah.
This is a project we're working on in part to talk today, and we were in conversation with Caltrans about that. So we do have Tom's plans, and we've talked to these partners.
Yeah, and Caltrans really needs to be a partner because it's turned into a de facto rest area. It's amazing to do work there and look at the license plates and listen to the foreign languages being spoken. And you said, this thing is international, and it's definitely a freeway rest stop for a lot of people driving long distance. So they need to pitch in, absolutely. And I think they would be a great partner. And the other improvement that I've given a lot of thought to, but I haven't drawn it up, is the overlook that just got vandalized. I think it'd be cool to do something like the gazebo at the Hedge Creek Trailhead by the drinking fountain that has a roof over it, and it has benches bigger than the one that's there now, but definitely a cliffhanger, but a safe cliffhanger, because it's such a cool spot to hang out. And it would be nice to improve that. And at Mossbury Falls itself, we hadn't talked about any improvements, but we would like to keep following up with the Saint Germain Foundation and at least try to do a boundary line adjustment. They want to keep ownership of the falls, and that's fine. That's not the issue. If we could move the property line to the center of the river, it would just make it cleaner. And in that situation, you could put in some picnic tables, something nice there at Mossbury.
Have you looked into potentially using the police power to take land for the public good?
You know, we, at Towne Dolly Park, we wanted to do a handicap fishing platform at the corner pool down at the downstream end of the park. Perfect place for it. And the city started that process with Olivia Alvarez, the landowner, and she was very unresponsive living in LA. And the appraisal came in ridiculously high. It was an unbuildable piece of land between River Avenue and the river. That didn't go all that well. Now, as far as Mossbury, that, it was discussed, but what killed it there was that it's outside the city limits. So what we had talked about, and actually, Mac Hanson was encouraging this because his whole career was with Chicago Public Works Department. He used eminent domain a lot. He, of all people, is saying, you just need to condemn it. It's not going to hurt Saint Germain anyway, you know, that was the view of it. But, but it would be a two-step process. The first step is to annex. And the city annexed the airport, and it's unfortunate that they didn't jump over to the other side of the freeway. And they put in a sewer line. Saint Germain Foundation is on city sewer. It's a no-brainer to pick up them and the old diamond lumber facility and the Caltrans facility there. It really ought to be all part of the city of Dunsmere. And then once you did that, you would be able to use eminent domain or convince the county to do it now. But the county is not likely.
To take things away from a religious organization, and that's a quote.
It was. You were at that meeting.
Yes, sir, I was.
Right. Yeah.
Remember.
Yeah.
How, so if I get the process right, where we're at right now is, we're waiting for N-Plan to finish the environmental and Union Pacific to approve the fence situation, and then we can move towards lease negotiations?
It's the other way around. N-Plan wants a resolution of the fence because of the wildlife implications. So I revised drawings based on conversations with Ellis Mays, the civil engineer for the railroad. And I got it dialed in. I think he's going to be happy with it. And then he can run it up the flagpole in Omaha. And as soon as they make a decision on the fence, N-Plan will finish its part, and we will finish the construction drawings and get those submitted to the railroad. They will incorporate that into what they call Construction and Maintenance Plan, the CNM Plan. It's a standard thing that they do. And the lease would be a subset of that. The one thing interesting that they did say a few months ago that kind of caught me by surprise is they said, make an offer on the amount of lease money. And I thought, hmm, we already did. We said $1. That didn't fly. So I, that's something to think about. I don't know who, how to best negotiate that, but clearly, that's where the city needs to be a very active player in these negotiations.
Civil engineer indicated that the real estate is a part of the whole nominee. We have, so we're just hoping for those.
We approve plans first, okay?
Yeah.
And then it's not until we have that lease, I have a question. What is the projected funding total for construction? And do we need to begin?
The projected funding had been $900,000, but it's been going up because of various ancillary reasons, more fencing, the gates, security camera. So it's going to be over a million. We need to redo that once we have a better sense of what they want. And then the other thing that's very significant here is if we went after a standard state grant, they typically want at least 10 years of land tenure, maybe more. And when we started negotiating with UP, they wanted a monthly. They wouldn't be able to get out of it anytime. And we said, well, we can't qualify to get a grant under those terms. We did go to the site with McConnell Foundation, and being a private foundation, they would have more flexibility. They wanted to wait until we get approval from the railroad and get everything pinned down. So we'll definitely go back to them. And I think that's the best and the fastest way to get the rest of the funding at this juncture.
And the Sierra Nevada Conservancy covers our area at this point and has been interested in funding the project, but they're at the same position. They want to see us have approval from Union Pacific for grants. And most of Sierra Nevada's grants have closed for the season. They usually open and close in the early part of the year. But again, they can dole out the money a lot faster, and they don't necessarily have as many. They'll probably want to see more than a month-to-month lease, but they don't have as many restrictions as some of the other state funders. Do you, do you still want to see if the county wants to do the Cat X instead of fish and wildlife?
Sure. I mean, if.
They were, they were interested and said they would be willing to do it. I provided them with some information a couple months ago, but I'm going to meet with them next week, and I can bring it up again. Do you want them to run the Cat X?
I think that would be a great conversation to have.
Okay.
Yeah, because.
I'll send you an email, because I've also been working with the Kruk as well, because the Kruk had also got. Because the Kruk had also got the letter.
Oh.
And they're.
Well, the reason I find that interesting is because Fish and Wildlife has been reluctant, sort of begrudgingly saying they would do it. So if the county were more enthusiastic about it, it kind of makes it fit a little more locally.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I'll send you an email.
Okay.
Pleasure to approve, you'd be surprised if anyone jumped on board.
Pardon?
I said, you'd be surprised. Once the pleasure approved, everybody's going to want to jump on board. Because this is such a good thing. It's going to benefit so many people. I think that everybody's going to want to jump on board.
Yeah.
We'll wait to see if we can get approval from the railroad.
I thought of another cost-related issue I should mention, and that is getting materials over to the other side of the river. We had asked a number of times if the railroad would help. Back in the Buckgroeschel days, I'm sure it would just would have happened, but it's, it's a total different ballgame now. And the railroad doesn't want to do it. They did mention that sometimes they use third-party contractors who they have vetted, who have high-rail dump trucks and machinery that might be able to do it. But they thought about it and, and they decided not to. And I think they're worried about tying up traffic on the tracks. And we don't, certainly don't want to do that. But the other thing that happened several years ago is they don't want us to cut into the bank at all for the trail, even though it's a three-foot-wide trail. So we're going to have to import a bunch of boulders for the portion of the trail that's not on the low-bend floodplain. There's maybe five or 600 feet of where we need to do that. So to get those boulders over there, the trail crew can do it with these mechanized dumpsters that can carry up to a cubic yard of material at a time. But it's a lot of traffic on the new bridge. So they're reluctant to beat up a new bridge, just getting rocked to the other side. I still have some work to do to see what we can do with helicopter delivery. So that's another consideration. The railroad does have some boulders up at the Moss Brae Falls end that tentatively we can have. They're just sitting there, so that'll help. And then another thing I mentioned is after the vandalism of the overlook, I got to thinking, you know, suspension bridges are beautiful and they're fun, but people like to bounce on them. And if people get too carried away with it, it's going to wear it out faster. It's going to need adjusting more frequently. There could be a more maintenance implication. When I was first looking at a bridge over the river, I was looking at a prefabricated steel truss bridge. They're a lot more bomb-proof. And after the vandalism, I found myself revisiting that idea. In that scenario, you build a temporary wooden platform in the middle of the river and you fly in to have a helicopter and bolt them together and take away your faults work and instant bridge. But the main thing is it's low maintenance and low likelihood of vandalism. So I do want to revisit that at this juncture because obviously whatever we build there needs to be really durable.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions?
I'm just talking about how you do. Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman. Well, just very important comment. Thank you. Is I understand that the city doesn't have a representative as part of the working group at this point?
I've been meeting with them.
Yeah, Juliana has been involved from day one and then, but also city manager has been involved, but they keep changing, so.
No, we just haven't met, we just haven't met recently, but I'm on all of the correspondence with Tom and UP and we've been following it.
At that level, but it seems like it's high time for the city to start talking about the ownership. I mean, if somebody misbehaves, who's going to snipe?
That's been in the O and S stuff.
Trash cans, bathrooms, are we going to charge? I mean, is there, because I have composite construction in the operations maintenance lane. Are we going to charge these the trails? Are they going to?
When Todd Uhotz was here and we were starting to talk about the trailhead upgrades for parking, they, it was discussed some like mechanism for charging for parking.
A lot of hard things happen depending on who the granting agency would be. Most of the time, if we were to get a grant to construct this, they usually stipulate that it has to be open to the public and we can't charge. But that doesn't mean we can't charge for parking. And so that's why we've been working on that avenue as a proposal.
Will this be a responsibility of the city's Public Works Department, the Parks and Rec District? Who's, who's got the ball?
Yeah, we were waiting for the approval to actually do the trail and then we were going to go into the other stages of the project. So we've just been mainly focusing on the trail portion and then we would move over to that one.
But it, it sounds like we're down to the details. We have the coordinating and the EIR stage.
Well, no, not me. We're not doing any EIR.
Well, we're doing maybe you.
But anyway, yeah, no, it's just been very slow. Once we get approval on the plans, it's going to be a lot easier to move forward quickly and discuss with everybody else. Because unfortunately, the Union Pacific engineers can come back and say, no, we want these pieces. And that's what Tom was saying, that's going to change the overall cost. So it's hard to cost things out and know exactly what's going to happen until they finally make a decision on, you know, the approval. So we've just been waiting on that piece. And then, once we go into the lease negotiation, we know that we can do the budget. We can go to the granting agencies. We can start talking about some of these other things.
But at this point, do we expect to be?
It has been, yeah. And then just bringing it back to council through reports when we have updates. We just haven't had an update in a while.
You said what? There's a lot of private funding. There's a little foundation funding. City funding is going to be involved. So it just seems in our whole time here budgeting process, it would be very ironic if it turns out the city is the one that holds up the opening of the trail.
No, we, we've been moving pretty quickly and talking about trash servicing, where those trash cans would be and different factors like that through the whole process so far. And then when Todd, well, we were, we were talking about doing bathrooms as like a phase two at the parking lot and going for parks grants related to that. But again, until we secure the lease and secure the trail, it's a little bit difficult to make the argument for some of these other pieces. Because if you go for a parks space grant for that phase two before the phase one, what you can risk is they've already spent the money here. And sometimes they have a restriction on proximity of projects. And so we've been looking at the different funding mechanisms in terms of what we can all include into the grant. So we may be able to do one grant, which includes all of the stages and doesn't disqualify one section from the other from getting a future grant. So there are a lot of moving pieces and we've been keeping that in track, but it's hard to get to that point until we have a final approved design for this piece. And then we've had peace working on preliminary engineering designs prior to Todd leaving on the parking lot structure and then a bathroom up there.
I'm just hoping the movers and shakers will let us see, you know, when it's time for us to step up, you know, on the operational issues for sure.
Well, like Juliana.
The whole notion of vision and planning. We want this to be an effort that matches the beauty that people are going to see.
This is the time for city staff and council to get more involved, to review the operations and maintenance plan, the draft version of that, and then to be thinking about this lease arrangement, to be ready for that. As far as the construction drawings and specifications go, that's pretty straightforward. Either a suspension bridge or this prefab steel truss bridge, but either way, you know.
And for us, it's at least a two-ring service. People who had a major presentation recently from Union Pacific, the federal EPA, Fish and Wildlife, state lands, water resources control board, and the significant fossil fuel leakage is a role of rhythm, including moving city facilities and all of this. So as I say, we're, I guess we're going to start talking about organizing. But we realized if this lasts, the communications between Union Pacific and the city are not very good.
Well, on the trail project, I'm, it's been slow, but I think the communications have been good. The people participating, you know, Juliana's been there all along. Todd was there for quite a while. It, it's just the slowness of the process, but I think all the pieces are coming together.
The civil engineer that we have now is really lovely and has been really, really good to work with. He's been extremely, extremely open with us and transparent. So I think it's been really good so far with Ellis.
The, the trail contractor is good too. You know, we, we actually helped in two respects already. The first thing is I threw the money that the Trail Association has. We moved that, removed that big dead white fir tree next to the water bottling plant because it could have fallen in, under the trailhead or as well as onto the building, water bottle building. So Trail Association paid for that. And then Public Works called about this giant Doug fir tree that fell. If you, if you've been down there, have seen it now. It says the de facto bridge over the creek. That thing, I mean, it was just too big for Public Works. So we brought in Cutrite Services and the trail contractor with a mini excavator to get the trail opened again. And then when this recent vandalism happened, I did run that by the Trail Association to see if they might pay for that too. But I was kind of pushing it a little too far at that juncture. But, but I, I want to do everything possible to help the city and the general public each step of the way. So keeping Hedge Creek open, having it be upgraded as it is now, it's so much more walkable. It's so heartwarming to see all the people that are down there, so many families. It's great. So I, I think it's moving in a real positive way.
Thank you. Do you see any opportunity for the St. Germain Foundation to give the railroad pause in cooperating with us on the lease?
Mac Hanson summarized it really well. He said, if you were to take a vote, the majority, vast majority of the members would not only support it, but they probably donate the land. They were going to get a private spur tied into it. It would really benefit them because the railroad gave them a cease and desist order to quit following the tracks down from Shasta Springs to Moss Brae Falls. So they're in the same boat as everybody else. They don't have access. But Mac said, you know, that's what the majority would say, but it's not a democracy. And in talking to some of the members over the years, the other members other than Mac, he said, people have said there's kind of a slow discussion going on internally. And I'm really hoping that that continues because we felt from day one, they would benefit from this, not only in terms of having good access for themselves, but really good PR, a really good way to advertise themselves. With Mac Hanson and I even talked about having some angel statue. There would be a wrought iron fence to prevent trespassing uphill from the trail, but there could be some statuary that they are into and some interpretive panels explaining who they are, what they are. You know, it, well, it's, it's part of our culture.
I don't know. After the Kruk response to them, I don't know if I would give them privilege over. The Kruk were not very happy with it.
I, I didn't mean to imply that it would be over Native Americans because obviously any interpretive facilities there need to really emphasize Native Americans like we did at Talendali Park. So you, you raise a very interesting point.
Yeah.
I, I would say the answer to that is that it would have to be discussed with the tribes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the Kruk responded to the St. Germain Foundation and it was not a kind response.
I heard about that. Yeah.
Yeah, so before we do that, maybe talk to.
Well, that, that's how we started eight years ago. And it didn't work anyway. But.
That's how Custer did it when he pissed off the Indians, you know. So we don't want to do that.
But John Kenny has been involved. Anytime we do receive any letters or information from the St. Germain Foundation is we just keep it in the loop just in case.
Thank, thank you so much. Any further questions?
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks to Big Dave for asking for an update and it's been a while, so glad to do that.
You're always welcome here.
So Blake, I guess, do I keep you in the loop?
Definitely, keep me in the loop. And as the public good, the city is ready to maintain as much as council sees fit and wants to allocate resources. So we're, we're all ready for it. We're, it's going to be a great project.
So I'll just keep funneling Juliana and include you. And, and I sent the latest on the operations and maintenance plan, didn't I?
I don't think I got a copy. The last, the last time we talked about it was with Ellis. And then Ellis was doing some updates.
I incorporated all of that. I thought I sent it to everybody, but I'll send it again just to make sure. And then, so you have the latest drawings right there, but Juliana doesn't have those. So I'll get.
I do have those.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I obviously see it on your email to Ellis when you sent them out.
Oh. Perfect. Got a lot of balls in the air. All right.
I think, thanks for all your communication. Yeah. Keep it out to me.
The one thing that we could do on a future agenda item is simply to look into the idea of annexing that area. That might clarify things. And I'm not saying we should do it, but we should look at it, I think.
I agree. All right. Moving forward, we do have a lot of agenda tonight. I'll now open the general public comment section. Anyone who wish to make a general public comment that is either not on the agenda or that's on the consent agenda, please either come up to the podium or raise your hand if you're on Zoom. You'll be allowed three minutes and please take your name and address for the paper. See none. I will close the general public comment for this evening and move forward into council and staff comments. My ask because of the wonderful report on Moss Brae and time we're taking up that we keep council comments somewhat succinct. Blake, would you like to begin?
If you want to start with T's. And he can, he can get out of your team.
Would you like? So the sheriff's office, about four hundred and five hours of services to be done there for us left. Hundred ninety-seven calls for service and self-initiated activity. That's down a little bit from last year, they're two hundred and thirty-seven. So it was brought to my attention last night, the sheriff's office has MDTs or in-car computers. We're still learning the, the pros and cons of those. I found out a con last night is some of the troops are entering their own security checks, school checks and other various things that they do on their shift directly and not going through dispatch. So then when their sergeant goes to pull staff for the end of the month, we don't get credit for those. So I, I think that we've had more self-initiated activity as a consequence of people not going through dispatch by school check numbers. Only ten as opposed to sixteen last year. So there's been an email sent out anticipating a sharp rise in our stats on that. The crime overall has been down. We had, I promise, we had zero burglaries reported in the month of April. The year before, we had four. So that's a good increase. I've, I've been on the night shift the last six weeks or so. In the three hours of the morning, we are not having much tweaker traffic. I, I think a huge part of that is Mark Allen and his work in securing the problem houses. The tweaker would usually gravitate toward, they've gone elsewhere. I couldn't be more proud of that. We had two assaults, two domestic violences, two vandalisms, ten disturbing the pieces, one traffic collision, five bar checks.
Excuse me, we could not have outside conversations for the audience?
Hey, Tom. Sorry, we can, it's really marked here. If you guys want to take it in the hallway, please. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So we have a really proactive younger group of deputies right now. If, if they see it, they're, they're getting to know. And I think that's a, that's, that's reducing a lot of our thefts and vandalisms, those types of crimes. So they, they see somebody walking, they're contacting them. Not necessarily taking them to jail or arresting them or writing them a ticket, but just getting to know people in the community. I think that's a huge part of avoiding if they were thinking about doing something wrong.
Hell, yeah.
Their covers tabbed, their lungs, their faces on by the camera unrecognized. So overall, I think the city's in a great place right now. And I'm hoping stuff to calm before the storm. I'm a little concerned with COVID kind of easing off. I'm, I'm expecting a big tourist crowd this summer. I think it'll be fun.
Thank you so much, Senator.
What about the lady that moved into the park?
Which lady are you referring to? The one that's migrated from Manfredi's and is currently in the South Park?
She's been in the park for three days by Mickey's Burger by the pool, by the train. Just was curious.
We've reached out to her almost daily. She's been reported as possibly being deceased twice. She's got mental issues. She's been referred to the Dunsmere Resource Center as well as mental health.
Is the community in any kind of danger? Is she a threat?
No, she typically only migrates at 15 to 20 feet a day.
I've walked my dog past her. She's just fine. She's just, yeah, she's just fine.
She's actually, we've gotten, I've never seen her under the influence of any substances.
I'm not the one asking. I'm asking people who are watching TV ask you.
Okay. So yeah, we'll be checking with her, make sure she's alive. Like I said, she's actually been reported as a deceased subject twice now. But we rostered her, gives away her snack and hit some resources.
She's been getting a lot of help, too, from the library, parents go back down there and over with.
Sent an email to public health as well. So when they bring the van down, that they might be able to stop by if she's got issues to move out.
Just some people are being shot. Yeah, she's committed zero crimes.
I know.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you. Any further questions, Sergeant Ortiz? Thank you so much. We really appreciate you keeping the city safe.
Excellent. All right. Yeah. Thanks so much, Ortiz. You're doing great. I was going to mention the Hedge Creek moment that Tom did. So there was the the top railings of the fencing at the overlook of Hedge Creek was torn out. So we're looking into getting that replaced. We've got a fix on it now. We had two job shadows I just want to mention. So some high schoolers came and job shadowed some Public Works. So that was interesting. Got some letters back from them, very nice letters from our high schoolers. Well, thanks Dunsmere High. Go Tigers. I was going to mention code enforcement. Ortiz stole that thunder. Doing a great job there. We're still researching banks. The audit has been started and we started the budget.
All right. Any questions?
Good to know you're here.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move forward into staff comment or council comments. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council and members of the public, I just have two items. One is I met with a representative of the Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce to form a steering committee. So we assure ourselves of having a return to the Alexander Dunsmere Award, Citizen of the Year Award. We're going to organize a new committee with new approaches. That is, we're going to recognize more people, younger people, senior people, profitable businesses, non-profitable businesses. And so I am going to work with the business community and chamber. We're looking at most likely the early weeks of October to have the event. The other is as Railroad Days gets closer and closer, I'm very pleased that the Siskiyou Arts Museum is working with the Black Butte Center for Railroad Culture. And there'll be a special show, end of the line, at the museum. There's going to be a substantial presence by the Black Butte Society all through Railroad Day weekend. So if anybody wonders will there be railroad-related things going on for Railroad Days, the answer is yes.
Thank you, Councilor.
Ladies first.
Thank you. I don't really have much to report on. The city manager brochure is flown. That's going forward. We got a little bit more information on that. So that's why it was delayed a little bit. I think that's all I'm going to do for today because I'd like to move this along. I want to keep this.
I would like to thank Tom Hansen for coming and sharing. I thought that was pretty cool. We're going to do a cleanup at the cemetery this weekend, but we found a contractor that's going to take care of that. So we're going to divert all efforts. If anybody wants to come and help out Saturday at nine o'clock, I'm doing a shout out for anybody that's got any carpenter skills. We are going to fix the grandstands. So I'm looking for carpenters and painters to work Saturday and Sunday at nine o'clock. I want to thank everybody that's been working on it. You guys were making a field of dreams down there. And I got to tell you, it was pretty nice to sit on my deck and watch the Tigers win a baseball game and go into the playoffs. It was pretty cool. And so Tigers are in the playoffs. The Tigers look good. The field looks good. If you guys, if you guys want to help out, we got the softball tournament coming up. That's the weekend after Railroad Days, which is the 17, 18 to 19. It's also the weekend that the Medal of the Mountains is going on on Saturday. But we want to have it all fixed up for that. We want to show off our town and and for the tournament. I don't know if we got a home game for the Tigers. I sure hope so. You know, that'd be kind of nice. But Railroad Days is the 10th, 11th, 12th. Soap boxes are going to be on the 12th with the car show at the end. Come check it out. I want to thank the pellet mill for donating 30 bales of straw so that we can make the soapbox very happy. I thought that's pretty cool. I heard the sheriff say earlier that the bears are out. It's that time. Lock up your trash cans or don't put it out till before trash day. And again, go Tigers. Congratulations, guys.
Oh, really quick. I forgot. We made it into AAA, made it into one of the 10 best mountain towns in the United States.
Yeah. Really cool.
One more thing. In case y'all didn't know, the trailer to the movie came out today.
Yeah.
So Dunsmere is going to be even more famous.
Dunsmere is very much featured in that movie. Council or Vice Mayor, go.
Thank you, sir. First of all, on the volunteer fair, I've made the rounds of the major players, the Resource Center, the Rotary, the Chamber. And I'm getting ready to put out a post next day or two to the public, asking everyone out there to host any other organizations, small or large, so I can come up with a good survey of all different volunteer positions. Then we'll end up, as Councilman Casey suggested, having a Zoom meeting to bring them all together and we'll work it from there. So I'm on track with that. The second thing is, is I've been trying to get a hold of the American Legion Post that has the honor guards for the area. And I was finally able to connect up with them. And so I'm working it right now. But as it stands, we're looking at having a ceremony at the cemetery on Saturday. That's the day that that honor guard would be available. And so what we're looking at is sort of repeated the ceremonies we've had there before at the cemetery. And I'm also going to be working with American Legion Post 92 to help them get some more members of the vets out there that might want to become part of honor guards as we get them older. So I'll be getting word on that. Hopefully, we'll have a ceremony then on that Saturday.
The 28th?
28th, yeah. And then finally, it's kind of a question that's been hanging around. I recall about several months ago, up to a year ago, that we had a, an item on the agenda that had to do with the Traveler's Hotel and removal of boxes at the back on Chester Avenue. And the agreement supposedly by the people doing the Travelers that they were going to put in some kind of a little alcove halfway down the Traveler's Hotel that would be able to like power during events like Railroad Days. Because right now, according to Sandra Hood, who reached out to them and Cheryl Petty, they had not heard of that. And they're willing to they're willing to open up and provide power as long as they're reimbursed for it. So that's something that's in the background. But what I'm trying to remember is what agreement did we come to at that point? Do you remember? I thought that there was an agreement that they were going to create an alcove in the building and that's where we could blow our power enters.
We can just take a look at the minutes and see.
Do you remember when that was?
It was about a year ago.
I mean, we do have more information on it if we want to get into it now.
It's not on the agenda. They missed an information item. We didn't pass on. All right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And all I had was that we've gone live with accepting applications for city manager, as already mentioned. So let's move forward to out of 10, approval of the minutes for the May 5th meeting and the special meeting on May 11.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for May 5th and the special meeting for May 11.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, staff. I abstain as I was not present. Motion passes. Let's move into the consent agenda. Tonight, we have the check registry or we don't have the check registry. There were no checks then. Chamber request to U City Hall Parking Lot, South Parking Lot for swap meet on May 28th. Dunsmere Farmers Market request for street closure of spruce between Dunsmere and Shaftesbury Avenues Thursday, 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
And pardon me, Mr. Mayor, real quick, I want to add to that item number C, if we can add to modify it to include the parking lot at the ball field. So in addition to same time, same frame, just add the parking lot. So potentially, they're going to be moving up that way. They're 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 looking at the two locations to potentially have it. But it looks like it's going to be moved to that parking lot in the northern, like what by the ball field. But just to have both approved by council. So just amend that motion to say include parking lot at ball field.
All right. Local transportation claim form. Authorize mayor to sign claim form to receive local transportation funds.
I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended.
Second. Any discussion of the motion at hand? See done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion very seriously. We have no public hearing tonight, so it moves us into old business. I don't think any public workshop relocation ad hoc committee.
So this was coming from the last meeting. Juliana wrote up some great things, bullet points. So thank you so much for that. This staff report is, sums up a little bit of it. Looking to potentially establish some kind of ad hoc committee. It, in my mind, it would essentially be a quicker access for staff to council. Whereas maybe one member of council would be asked to partake in this committee. And essentially just do some of these functions, work with staff. We have to go forward with it no matter what. So we will be, as staff, will be working forward on these projects. But if there's just a quicker access to council, that's a potential reason for this ad hoc. And again, it discusses site feasibility, the demo, the reconstruction, any kind of surplusing of equipment.
I think an ad hoc makes sense.
Just a quick question. Do you prefer one or two council members for the ad hoc?
It really doesn't matter. I mean, it just turns our flexibility and timing. I think a lot of it can be done over emails just to say, here's this, here's that. But if we do need to meet, if if schedules are tight, then then one's better. But two is two is great as well.
I do not have the time to do that.
I'm sure like that.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind being part of it. It kind of touches on both of our.
Yeah, the real estate part.
I do have a little write-up because I didn't do a resolution. Like I said, I wrote it up really quick. So I do. I do have notes. So when we get to that.
So we do want to make it to that part.
Well, could we, I mean, I'm not in favor of creating a committee with no charter. So the committee.
That's what she has right there.
Yeah, yeah. So could we see the charter first? It could be an impediment to decision-making. I don't know. So we have an ad hoc committee. We have the city manager. We have no public works director. And we have the council and we have the planning committee.
It basically consists in the creation of a draft plan that addresses.
Relocation.
I had all this right now.
Well, and I don't want to make you do it now.
So that's, you know, some of the idea, city council will direct city manager. City manager is essentially the public works director as well. So.
You're not making any decisions.
No, it would be creating a draft plan that would address site feasibility, demolition, reconstruction, and how they're going to deal with equipment, transportation, and storage of that equipment.
And does the ad hoc committee have access to the city attorney, engineer?
Just like normal, that that's all fine, for sure. But city council will make the ultimate final decisions on most of the, on pretty much 99% of these things.
I'd like to see it written first.
I always thought we should have two because there's really two different levels here. One, it's about the construction, deconstruction, moving things, equipment. And then the other part has to do with programs and, and, you know, keeping track and communicating. So I think it really does have two functions. And I think Matthew and Dave would be two good people to fill those.
Can you want to open the comment before we go to discussion?
Yeah, let's open public comment on this item. As before, I come to the podium in the room for raise your hand. See done. I will now close public comment on this item.
I think for the sake of, like Peter says, put it in writing. Could we table this until the next meeting?
I strongly oppose delaying. I mean, well, staff has to move forward.
That's kind of what I was thinking, too, but he wants it right.
Could we just authorize two members to start and we'll bring the charter back? Because we know that we need it. Is that okay?
Yeah, we did. I'm sensitive, Dave.
It's kind of tricky. There's an urgency, but I'm not clear what the urgency is that the ad hoc committee is going to do to address whatever's going on over there.
So I had a.
Committee versus no committee. It's sometimes easier just work through the city manager. So.
That is an option as well.
That is an option as well, yeah.
Yeah. And I think Blake brought this to us, saying that he needed help. So I think that's why we're we're trying to get a couple of other bodies to help. So what I have written down is the purpose of the Public Works, Public Workshop Ad hoc Committee. The purpose is to assist city staff with the development of a public workshop relocation plan. It would be in a, I just said two council members because I did this really quick. And the timeframe for the ad hoc would be to completion of a draft plan that would be presented to city council. So I can.
And it's likely will be over.
When, once they complete a draft plan for our consideration.
So like a couple months?
I think.
We would hope.
So the timeframe would basically, the committee would dissolve at the time that a draft plan is completed and presented to city council for.
Correct.
I can type that up for you for the next meeting.
No, I just. There's, there's, as we know, there's tremendous cost potential. There's tremendous liability potential. And I don't want anything worse.
Yeah. It should be in writing and we'll be back to maybe codify what we're talking about here. But really, this is just to assist staff. If city council input helps or expertise perhaps helps in evaluating our options and coming back to council for decisions.
I concur with that assessment.
So I mean, I'm.
I move to appoint Councilman Kessler and Mayor Brian to this committee and come back to us with a charter of a proposed charter and come from there.
Second.
Any further discussion of the motion? All those in favor? Let's move into item, or do we have any further updates regarding that at this point for council?
No, nothing big. We have, we got some preliminary numbers. We've reached out to a company that can look into building and deconstructing. So we do have a kind of a rough idea of what numbers might look like.
You also got some kind of an idea where one of the options would be to, if we were to remain on the city property.
Right.
Well, okay. All right. Then let's move into item B, California Theater Landmark Designation Update. I trust everyone looked over the planning commission minutes.
All right. So thank you. Thank you, councilors. So, yeah, everybody looked it over. The main things we just want to touch on. Myself is that I want to point out at the very, so it's page 19 of the agenda packet. The the last paragraph there, we've got Rico's mentioned. At this point, the $500 that the city council has allocated has been spent for, in order for the ordinance, per ordinance regulations, the the next procedure would be a public hearing. And so that has a cost right now of $155, essentially just printing labels, stuffing envelopes, mailing out to all the required public noticing for that public hearing. So there is further staff costs associated with moving this item forward. The other piece, the key piece down at the very bottom is potentially seeking guidance from the city attorney, which is again also a financial and staff time hindrance. So I think that's it in terms of the general item. The item has, was, was placed. Everybody knows Dunsmere Live came and presented before you this body. They've referred to the planning commission. Planning commission has done their initial reviews of it and has now brought it back to y'all here.
All right. So before we get into discussion on this, please refrain from.
That's not quite true. Planning Commission is holding a second hearing next month.
Right, yeah. So the planning commission will hold the public hearing. Right, yeah. So the planning commission will hold the public hearing barring, you know, with, with additional funds.
Yeah, so.
And then it'll come back again.
Okay. Good. Any clarifying questions at this point? And I'll open up the public comment before we discuss.
Well, does the staff have a new budget for processing this matter?
Not entirely. We have a $1,900 figure that, that of course is, is if the, you know, park, property owner is willing and able to, or is wanting to go forward with the project, then it's a roughly $1,900 figure.
There will be another hearing at the council here.
Yeah, it'll come back to this council meeting here and have a public hearing, which won't have as high of a cost. I mean, our, our contract planner doesn't necessarily need to attend that meeting if you're getting down to cost questions.
So the one question I have is, doesn't this all come down to this only works if the property owner goes along with it and will take advantage of it?
No, it's not the only way. So within the city ordinance, there is mechanisms in place to have city council establish either a landmark or a historic district. So you have to follow those plans in order. The, the previous procedure for the historic district was to analyze each individual building, do a full workup. I think apparently I've heard in the past from Mr. R, I believe it was whoever, that an actual student like volunteered time, maybe were paid time to write up. And I've seen these write-ups on each individual building, establishing the historical significance. So the city went through pains and, and procedures to try and establish this to then go forward to say, this is a viable reason, a valuable reason to the community to be able to establish the fact that this is now a historic district. And so all those things are in place.
What I'm asking though is, if we were to do this and the property owner decided he didn't want, didn't like this, this, what does this do then? Does it help us at all?
There's no benefit to the city whatsoever.
That's what I'm asking.
Right, yeah. No benefit to the city whatsoever. And if the property owner could potentially do things, and that's where we would advise with the attorney.
But the, there's two parallel processes. We were, like last time, I think the planning commission, based on these very detailed minutes, I was kind of grappling with the same issue. The two parallel processes in our ordinance is historic district or historic landmark. And it's designed to be an or. In the case of the theater, because we very much are supportive with Dunsmere Lives initiative, gathering the community and proclaiming the theater a landmark. But it wasn't designed to do this because, because it's already a district. It's already been done. So in this particular case, it doesn't have any issue. But if it were an outside building, say the church down the road.
It's not in the historic.
It's on the historic district. So a landmark designation then carry the weight of doing all this work that was already done with the district. So it doesn't hurt us to call it that, but our ordinance wasn't quite designed to do that. I think that's kind of the confusion. So it would affect the property owner theoretically. It's just, this is the one case where it's already in the historic district. So it doesn't have any meaningful difference in its status.
I guess my whole point here is I just would like, well, this is a discussion I'm sorry.
What I get from reading is it's already a historic district, making it a historical building gives it no more benefit. Does, does nothing more to it. It's already in a historical.
This was fully talked about the meeting where we, at Dunsmere Live present, and then at least they convinced four of us that the impetus of this was symbolic in a very good way. It was to highlight the importance of the theater in our town for the economy and for the community. You know, I'm for it even though I understand the ordinance wasn't designed for it. It helps the conversation move along. But it's not like it's entirely meaningless, but the meaning comes from the fact that it was over for four hundred signatures. You know, we want to respect that. I think the planning commission is asking all the same questions we do. So let's open this up a public comment. Is there any additional clarified questions?
I see one member of the public.
Yeah, if anyone would like to open it up.
He's here, he's everywhere.
Yeah. So Tim Hull, Dunsmere. I'm, I'm a little confused about where this conversation is going to be perfectly honest with you. So to me, this has always been a very simple matter of deciding, you know, is the California Theater an architecturally and historically significant building in Dunsmere? And clearly it is. And yes, it is mainly a symbolic gesture, but it is one that's supported by the community. We're actually up to 400. Zinti, 450 signatures now. You have the support of organization. You have the support of your newly appointed town historian who's very much in favor of this measure. So to me, it's kind of a slam dunk. Where I'm confused, I guess, is if I heard correctly, something about $1,900? Did I hear that correctly? Well, not sure. Okay. But I, I think the public, you know, would like to know what that's all about. Because that sounds, we contribute, we wrote the draft of the proposal. Dunsmere Live did, myself, that is, and Ron McLeod. So I'm, I'm really confused about where we're getting $1,900. Because we contributed most of the quote unquote staff time for this effort. So maybe that could be clarified at some point. And, you know, the only thing I would add is that also a figure of 165 was thrown out. So again, my confusion is, it sounded like Blake was saying that we've gone over the 500. And now we're looking at 165, but then we've got this $1,900 floating out there somewhere. So I don't know what this is all about. But I would add that, you know, I'm sure Dunsmere Live could contribute something for this cost as well. I certainly think the city needs to as well. But yeah, we could, we can ship in something if that's necessary. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. R. All right. Are there any additional public comment on this item?
Boy Bailey, 5906 Castle Avenue. On this issue, it seems that we have an obligation to try to stave this building. And I understand it. As I said at the planning commission meeting, that when you write a ballot argument, people put projects forward of which this initiative allows us to do. I lo, I kind of look at it weighted. If I write a ballot argument and I'm a single person, and I don't like school bonds. I write the ballot for school bond. But I know the committee of five or 10 members or an organization or a library or a school bar or somebody larger than myself would write that ballot, that it doesn't get the same weight. So that would be the ballot that would be chosen to put in the newspaper, put in the ballot initiative. And I kind of look at it here. We heard an organization has brought this together. We heard that they've developed time, that they're putting a project forward. I did hear your meeting. I was not at your meeting in October, but I have read exactly what you've read and what you were stating. I saw that there was some discussion of funds that's been discussed tonight. But my understanding is that this, we heard 400 signatures. I haven't seen a signature. I don't know if it's voters or people or that. But that's a, that's a body of people. That's a great body of people. We need to listen to that. So that's weight. But that's not an organization. I just heard him saying that this organization could help with the 1,900. Staff report and stuff says the owner should be responsible for that. If not, the city would might have to pick it up. That's how I interpreted that. This organization is an organization, a street live. Are they a 501(c)? Do they, they want to become a 501(c)? How is this funding mechanism or how is this going to generate where we work with a non-owner with another agency raising funds? You see? So I don't know that I would say can even accept the $1,900 from this organization at that time. Unless it was documented, I guess, that there was a committee. So that's, that's my feeling on it there. I think this body, from what I understood, the planning commission was to look at this issue, bring it back for a public hearing with more discussion. I also received in the minutes here, someplace it says, and I read it in the minutes of the planning commission meeting, that the planning commission meeting was going to receive some documents on this. So we came, became informed. What I became informed of mostly was on the agenda 72 hours in advance. Okay. It stated again here. It's the second time I've seen that as a documented thing. The planning commission was supposed to come prepared to that meeting last month, the last two weeks ago. So I, I kind of feel that even the public hearing, I don't know if we're ready for a public hearing at that time. It is discussed and we're letting it go. But I'm not sure the public hearing is, all the problems was resolved at this point.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
We are not, we're not a 501(c)(3) per se, but we do have 501(c)(3) sponsorship under the Siskiyou County Arts Council. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. All right. Is there any additional public comment? See, I will close the public comment period on this. Could you speak briefly to the 165 and the 1,900 so everyone can, the family doesn't have benefit of the staff report?
Yeah, sure. So just anytime that, that the city wants to do something, funds are utilized. And so if the city desires to go forward with this project, then of course it's going to incur expenses. Right now, our planner is a contract planner. So we definitely have to expend literal dollars outside. So funds have to leave the, the treasury, right? If it's staff time or if it's, there's no actual physical leaving the treasury for that. But in this case, there was a, and a thought process by our contract planner that potentially his time required, he's already utilized essentially maybe more than $500. We'll see. But he's already utilized the $500 to pick to, that was allocated originally for him to even just prepare, to, to print out papers, to, to do whatever he needs to do for the planning commission. Now further to that, the 155 is the, is according to the schedule, our, our schedule of fees at the city of Dunsmere. If you want to do a public hearing. This is supposed to cover the envelopes, the manual, stuffing of staff time to go out and do it. Now, we've already discussed prior that we need to maybe revise that, but that's another story. So $1,900, so 155 is like the, the cost that, that we normally incur from somebody that's trying to do a public, some public hearing, any, any kind of public hearing that, that a citizen or whomever wishes to do. So further, so if you aggregate all these things, it could be the 1,900. It could be, could be 155 without talking to city attorney. That's another cost that we, our actual literal dollars coming out of the treasury to go toward the attorney in order to discuss certain.
If everyone's clarification, is it 1,900 a total or is that in addition to the 500 already expended?
It's in, it's in addition to, and again, it's just an estimate.
And it's a low ball.
And it's my opinion too, that it's low ball.
All right, well, then.
Well, one question. What is the status of the exterior and interior inspection of the theater?
We can physically look at the exterior. We've done that. We haven't done any interior inspection.
In terms of a vacant and distressed building ordinance enforcement that we've been doing so.
Well, no, you're, you're hitting my point, which is for the owner, there is the landmarking effort. And then I'm going to assume that he is going to receive an inspection from the city for the interior and the exterior of the building. And that's a piece part for the planning commission to look at. It is part of the application. What is the condition of this building? So I'm just asking where we are with that information.
We had gained access to that locale.
Is it planned and scheduled?
We're in discussions with property owner.
What, I thought we had a right.
The, as a, as an abandoned vacant distressed building, those are required to register. And of those who do register, in the ordinance, it says the city shall enter those, those parcels that have been registered as vacant or distressed.
Do you have some other registration yet?
I don't know if I can get too specifics, too specific in this, in this case. But we had, the city has reached out to those entities that have registered, have, we have scheduled some inspections. Some entities are asking the city not to inspect. So we are going through the procedures to try and go forward with gaining access to a building.
And why would the city not inspect?
There's, there's no reason not to. We're.
No reason not to.
So the city shall. So the city shall inspect. It's in the, it's in the ordinance that the city shall inspect. So we have the right to.
I guess disappointed but not surprised that no members of this council attended a planning commission hearing other than yours truly. But if you had gone, you would have found out the support for saving the theater amongst the planning commissioners is tremendously strong. And all of this worry about why are we doing this? If you look at page 18 of your agenda package, the comments on page two, the notes that were written up by the city planner, Chairman Kay supports Commissioner Sperlock's comments and asks whether it is a hardship on the city that might result if the property owner does not want landmark designation. This notion that there's absolutely nothing to be gained by the landmark designation. I can give you this little hypothetical. You've already heard from the owner of the building is his belief that the vertical blade sign cannot be saved. And that he has a complete right to take that sign down, make it disappear. And some sort of a pledge to put up a replacement sign, but it won't be saved. So if he backs up the truck next week and they unbolt the sign and it heads down Dunsmere Avenue to Garsno Square, what power does the city have to stop that?
Within the historic district ordinance.
What, what would the city do?
You'd have to contact John Kenny.
They're unfolding it.
You would have to get John Kenny to do a cease.
I would, I would direct staff not to interfere, but we would.
You could, because technically they need to get an encroachment permit to do work within the right wing of the city. So you shut the job through.
And that would incur significant enforcement costs. The city would pay for, or the building owner would pay for, we don't know. But without protecting the significant architectural features and the lead commissioner of the two that protect the historic district agreed with the applicants that this is the crown jewel of downtown Dunsmere. And yet we're asking ourselves over on this side, why are we even doing this? And is it a waste of money? So I'm a little unhappy about the posture. I don't know if this council wants to save the California theater and its significant features or not. If we do, Mr. Mayor, I have a suggestion. The biggest worry at the planning commission and the biggest worry here is the owner just sits this thing out. And that doesn't help anybody because it moves us into lawyers and litigation and protracted delay. So how about this? Chrissy Thummer was the lead commissioner at the planning commission. And she feels very, very strongly that this effort is worth it to save the building and get it reopened. What if the city paid for, and I'm just sort of rolling this out as a proposal, four, four hour sessions with a professional facilitator? And at the table will be one member of the planning commission. That would be Chrissy. One member of the city council. That would be Juliana.
I do not, I do not have four, four hour days.
Someone other than Peter, perhaps the mayor, perhaps the building owner. Doesn't have to be council. A chair will be reserved for Dunsmere Life, one person. A chair will be reserved for Mark Juarez, the building owner, or his authorized representative. And let's see, with a goal of, the building owner wants the same thing, the city wants the same thing, Dunsmere Live wants the same thing, we're not going to move forward until we start to get the parties together on a common plan. Of course, in that plan, it's not just who's going to do it, who's going to own the building. But we have to have this conversation. The empty chair doesn't benefit anybody.
I have, I, I will say, just on that note, that I have been. I have, I will say, just on that note, that I have been in discussion with each of those members that you mentioned, and I can ascertain that all of those members want those things.
Yeah, and I would like to point out, just as a point of reference, if you look through the minutes, it's clear that, I don't think there's, definitely not a member of council currently, but I don't think there's a member of Dunsmere at all that doesn't find the theater to be a crown jewel of our area and worth saving. It's more when and how to expend city resources for our own goal, and that's what's being discussed here. I appreciate that proposal, it might actually really do a lot of good towards saving the theater, but the item on the agenda is not how do we save the theater, the item on the agenda is essentially.
Just an update, there's no requested action.
Well, the, the action is, the update is, we're spending more money, are you okay with that, Council? Or would you like to stop? That's just being asked.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think it's offensive to suggest that any member of this council would not care about the theater. It's offensive. We're not talking about whether we care about the theater or not, what we're talking about is what extra weapon do we get with designating that as a historic building that isn't already in place? What are we spending the money to achieve? Is it going to give us any extra powers? And we've been told it won't.
We told you that.
Well, yes.
Rico Tinsman.
Rico Tinsman. We, we discussed this at length at a prior meeting, if council wants to revisit it, but we did have majority support moving forward on it, up to the $500. What's being revisited is, do we want to support it more or seek alternative funding?
And Mr. Tinsman, what the planning commission didn't, were we getting out of spending the money?
So going back, I don't want to argue about this, because after the public hearing, it'll come back to us anyway, and we can have this conversation. Again, I think it sets a very bad precedent for the city to subsidize a private application that a private individual would typically pay for. So because of that precedent, I cannot vote in good conscience to move forward with spending more city funds. It's a personal thing, that is my personal thing. Because again, say I come in and want to do a parcel map for my lot in North Dunsmere, and I say, well, I'll give you guys a small portion of my lot for the city, or if you just pay for the entire parcel map, that's not a benefit from it. Even if the city's getting a tiny bit out of that parcel map, I get a whole bunch of new parcels that I don't need to pay for, or I don't need to pay for the surveyor to do that work for me, because I say, hey, I'll give you this tiny chunk of my property if you pay for this. I think that's the precedent I want to avoid, and that's why I would not vote in favor of allocating more city dollars to this.
I don't think it has anything to do with your love for the building, does it?
No, no, it has nothing to do with the concept, and I understand that. I think for me, I am worried about the legal precedent it sets for the city subsidizing private, private applications with general fund.
I probably saw the petition. If the building is saved, it's going to fall apart and everybody loses. And when I went around with clipboards to every single merchant in downtown, they all gladly took the clipboard, because they know, in some part, their economic future depends on the empty and abandoned buildings in the historic district being fixed and opened. So the notion that we're going to founder, because the impact on the general fund will be 20 times $1,900, it's just collective stupidity to founder on how we're going to work this matter through city governance. So perhaps the chamber might find some money, I'll bet they can. Perhaps Dunsmere Live can find some money, I'll bet they can. If you want us to do cookie sales on the corner to pay for this, we'll do it.
What will they be buying?
Yeah, I will just say the 1,900.
What are they going to be getting out of the lobby?
I mean.
I can't explain it to you.
Well, it's just, I think, Councilman Art, I understand you're right, you're equating moving forward with this as the beginning of actually affording the theater, in fact, it hasn't been. I would argue personally that enforcing our current historic district ordinance is the most effective means, which will also cost the city money, even if it's built in.
Of course it will.
So I, I guess.
This inner city manager had a.
I was just going to mention that the $1,900 does not help enforce the vacant distressed building ordinance or the enforcement of the historic district ordinance currently.
But who's going to pay for the enforcement of it?
The, the city is already paying for that.
The building owner is supposed to.
Well, the, the historic district ordinance and the vacant distressed building ordinance, the historic ordinance, there is a registration fee for those entities, which goes into the general fund, and the expenditures come out of the general fund.
I assume this is the exact same program as the City of Weed, and in the City of Weed, they charge everything to the building owners that are causing the enforcement of it.
Well, I think that's another item that we can schedule for a future agenda to discuss that item, but again, it's not the item that I have.
This is where, you know, we could spend years in court doing this, or we could try to get the parties to sit down, perhaps you could convene Dunsmere Live, a representative from the chamber, Mr. Juarez, and figure out whether he's willing to pay for something.
And if that's council's direction, I'm happy to coordinate and try and make that happen.
The whole point is getting.
That's a little separate than this issue, but I'm happy to.
Well, it could be related to this issue, if we, if we could have a meeting between the interested parties.
Because again, I have, I have physically met with each member that, that is being discussed in this item.
Maybe Dunsmere Live could contribute funds on behalf of Mr. Juarez, if he were willing to work that out.
And I, Mr. Juarez has expressed to me a desire to see things happen, so maybe even he would be willing to do some sort of effort.
Just for the sake of tonight, I'll motion to deny the request to expend any additional city funds on this application.
I'd have to second it in the way it is.
All right, I'm happy to move that forward, I do have something to say in the discussion though, other motion and second. My position, I'd prefer something along the lines of not derail what's happening, there's a lot of people working on the planning commission in the community, and they don't necessarily understand this key distinction, that we're applying a landmark which was designed to be outside the historic district onto the historic district, and that's why it loses some of its meaning. I propose, because I already backed this, that we give an additional fund, but ask that any further funding be taken care of by outside parties, and that gives them time to arrange the things, come back to us with what they can propose on that. So I don't know, that'd be my take on it.
As a discussion point, I'd just like to reiterate the idea that whatever we decide here has nothing whatsoever to do with how we feel about the theater.
We all love the theater.
We all love the theater, and I'm appreciating everything that Dunsmere Live is doing and the city manager is doing, but if one title is exactly the same as the other title, and it provides the same powers and everything else that the other one does, it doesn't make sense to spend money just to get an extra title on top of a building that's already historically designated.
I might ask the professional planner in the room, is there a way for us to hold a grand public comment section and then vote on whether we pick it as a historic landmark at the council and approve that?
If that's your process within your ordinance, but my understanding is that is not the process. So you are going through the correct process, you're facilitating that, nobody is stopping that process, the issue at hand is whether we want to expend additional city dollars to subsidize that. Again, if, if there are people who are, again, the 450 people you have signed up, each of those people give $2, that's $900 right there, we can find other people to, to give money to the city to pay for that private application. Like I said, mine has nothing to do with the process, I am happy with the process moving forward, there is no issue with that. I just don't, like I said, my position is I don't want to set a precedent of the city subsidizing a private applicant, even if it does have a slight city good to it, I, I don't think that's appropriate, and I think that gets us into a legal quagmire with future applications. So that is why I vote the way I do. I'm happy to write a check after this to the city to help reimburse for some of that cost as a private citizen, but that's my, my prerogative.
I agree.
I think that's the distinction I'm trying to make, is that I'd love to see it continue to move forward until fruition, because that's what the majority voted on the last time, and I believe that will still continue, it's just a matter of who is going to be paying for that action.
So how does it move forward if there's no funding for staff to move it forward?
Basically, they would freeze the application until the funds are gathered.
So no planning commission meeting next month?
Correct, it would be, it would take place once you get the money to pay for that.
Motion to amend.
Why didn't we figure that out?
I did bring that up a month ago.
I did, but before, before.
Yeah, it was only a $500 budget.
Yeah, the $500 was the limit to get started. We do have a motion on the table, I believe the motion, you can reiterate if it's too brief.
Motion, motion to deny the quest, to request to expend additional city funds on this application.
Can we also include direct staff to work with the parties involved to see if funding can be planned and moved forward?
I think that's fine.
Just meet, just try and get funding.
Well, me with Juarez and Dunsmere Live, the two parties.
Okay, coordinate, coordinating a meeting between.
See if funding can be coordinated.
Okay, got it. Yep, yeah.
I'll second that. Call the votes, right?
Councilmember Art?
No.
Councilmember Lukeyzi?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
And Mayor Brian?
I'm going to go with no for now, I kind of want to see it move forward, because it's taking a lot of time already.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Something was said, I don't know if I'd take offense to, or if I'm just appalled, but I've been doing this a long time, I've gone to a lot of seminars, and I try to learn, and I try to be the best city councilman I have. I hope it's appreciated. But I don't go to the planning commissions, because it's a Brown Act violation, it is a form of intimidation.
Technically, you can attend those meetings as a private citizen, it's just if you.
As a private citizen, but if you're on council and you're going to the planning commission, it is a form of intimidation, that's why I don't go. Hey, I'm just pointing out the why I don't go.
Wise decision, it's a good thing.
Thank you very much.
Looking for, I'm saying that's why I don't go.
All right, understood, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move into item 14, new business, we have item A, informational item, update on city hall staff reorganization, and an update on public works director.
All right, thank you all, yes. So I guess we'll start, so the public works director has finally informed myself that he will no longer be making his way up here, so there is no public works director going to be hired.
So the guy that we've been waiting for 10 months isn't coming?
That's right, that's right. So then also, in terms of city hall staff, so the city created and hired a part-time position to help transition for some pending retirements back in the day, a couple of years, or four or five years ago, something like that. Since then, that part-time position has left. So it is current acting city manager's plan to do a reorganization of city staff, look at duties, look at job descriptions, look at important aspects, look at the budget, try and take all of this into account, and reorganize staff, reorganize duties in a way that can be beneficial for the entire city. So I just touched on our resolution 2022-02, in that the, that resolution authorized by council with the abstention from Mayor Brian, was to do a 15% increase to those staff members during this interim time. So should this reorganization happen, we will take that 15% and then utilize it in a different fashion. Everything, all of this will stay within current budget. I have already discussed with, with union, potentially some discussions with staff, and that's the general item right there.
You can make it work.
Questions? We'll make it work.
Additional questions? Thank you. As this is informational only, we're going to not hold public comment on it at this time, we'll come back to our vote, we certainly will. Let's move into item B, notice to Dunsmere citizens regarding fireworks ban.
So this was an item from last, last week, or last meeting, yes, I brought it up, so I made this open to any suggestions. Mayor Brian did it, or Juliana did it, beautiful.
I have a question for the city manager.
There you go.
Oh, fine.
Cute.
Yeah, Bruce. Yes, Vice Mayor.
So, Mr. Carver there. City manager, would you agree that the reason why we have this on the agenda is because we don't want to burn down, we want to make sure that people out there know that they shouldn't be doing fireworks because that would burn us down? Is that our understanding of what we're doing here?
That is correct, yes, exactly right. Incendiary devices during low water and high weather is not ideal.
I have been talking with the chief about the possibility of doing, like an hour, the day before the 4th of July, he said, check with this crew and get back to me. We'll see where it goes. It's difficult, because he never knows whether he's out of town on a fire or not, but the idea would be Pine Street Plaza, you bring your own fireworks, we don't have any liability as far as that goes, fire engine on either side, he says it'd only take about him and two other guys. If we do the third instead of the fourth, we have the fireworks on the.
Or on a fire.
Or on a fire.
I'd be, all the fire guys should be ready, prepared. I just remember Chief Padilla saying that 4th of July is the worst day of his year ever year.
Yeah, but he agreed with me that our ban, without any legal outlet, I just either send people to, you know, random corners of Dunsmere, or send people straight to the county, where they refuse to enact a ban.
No.
All right, that one's informational only, right?
How much do you want to provide, any direction?
All right, we move forward to future agenda items, I don't think we're ready for it in the near future, but council, Vice Mayor Deutsch suggested we examine annexation options for Dunsmere, it's long been something I support looking into, but I think.
I just, I just think we don't have the staff currently until we get a city manager, and we don't have a budget for RICO to investigate this yet.
I just asked for that.
And annexation, annexations do take a lot of effort.
Right.
We, we are starting just a expansion of a sewer service area, not in an annexation, but a sewer service area for Wai Riga, and that's going to take a year and a half and quite a bit of budget to just do services. Annexation is not, not a quick and fun.
Yeah, perhaps maybe when we get a new city manager on board, and things are running well, let's start with hopefully say maybe August or September, perhaps Councilman Lukeyzi or our planner, I can give a presentation on what the process of annexation entails, looks like, costs, we can understand what we'd be getting into, because it makes sense on surface, I agree.
And since we're going, since this is a northward move, we also have at least one residence now that would like to be the city's, and that's a forms.
Yeah, and, and basically, any, any private property owner may instigate annexation proceedings at any time, but they would cover the cost of that application. So again, it goes back to that, private, if private individuals do want to, they can, they can propose anytime, as long as they are immediately contiguous with the city ordinance.
This lady hates the UBS, dude, she'll pay, she wants to be part of it.
So, so again, people who are interested may do that themselves and pay for that process, but if the city is instigating it, it is on city funds for that portion.
But also it gives us a chance to get Caltrans.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, that's. It sounds like they're supporting council, I think we're all agreed to defer it, at least.
Yeah.
At least in the immediate future. Any additional items for future?
I think the biggest thing is, finance committee's just been waiting for Blake to get free time to do finance stuff, so I don't really want to put any more future agenda items on until we can address some of our more important stuff.
Yeah, we do have lots coming up, especially a month from now will be in the middle of interviews.
Yeah.
So before we adjourn, I was asked, Mr. Mayor, you have been requested to be at Railroad Days, don't take, could you accept the challenge?
What are the times?
We'll let you know. Okay?
We'll work something out.
Okay.
I see brins and.
Got it. Thank you, sir. It's all about the kids and having fun, right?
Definitely. All right.
I'm making a motion, will we adjourn?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
All right, thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you.